All this November seventeenth. Regular meeting of the board of selectmen to order as my usual public service announcement. These are meetings are always open to the public and our meetings of the board of selectmen to conduct the business of the board. Like to offer comment, we have two opportunities on the agenda at the beginning and end and appreciate holding comment till those times. Our first item is to approve the minutes of the November third meeting. I do have some corrections. Joyce, you want me to do them? Outside, I should probably do them outside the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there were corrections that I made for the last meeting minutes that weren't recorded in the minutes and it was also not doesn't reflect that in the motion, which I believe I said the to approve the minutes with corrections or as corrected or something like that. So if we can just get that piece corrected. Anybody else have any corrections?
Bottom of page one. About the comment from Joyce about the board of selectmen made a motion on March tenth, it should be two thousand twenty, not two thousand twenty-two.
That's what I was going to say as well. Thanks, Rivers.
Righty. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes with corrections.
Second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Initial public comments on agenda items. I don't see any hands up. We'll keep going. Under correspondence, we have a letter from Andrew Osef, the chair of the I guess now former Kent veteran, Kent Veterans Memorial Committee. Basically just bringing us up to date on on what their, what that committee did, Randy, the, I'm sorry, town council drafted a basically just the legal document that Andy signed. So that's all set and we're just waiting for the dispersment from the committee for their the contents of for their balance in their checking account, which they're waiting for a rebate check from their insurance company. So once we get that, then they'll send that over to Barbara. Next is an email from Matt Starr regarding the sidewalks and I did respond to that today. Do we want to go over that or did you guys have a chance to read that yet?
I breezed over it, but maybe a little refresher, maybe.
Yeah, let me just find it quick. So the first question, well, the comment, they look very nice. The sidewalks, the first question was a section of paved sidewalk on the east side of North Main between eighty-eight and ninety North Main was not replaced. Was this an oversight or left in on purpose? And my understanding is that this was at the direction of the DOT.
That's where Starbucks, Starbucks, whatever it is now.
North, yeah, basically there's like a little tiny spot right in front of Garrity's White Picket Fence. And that's what he's referring to. Three, the board really should ensure that proper snow and deicing products are used and nothing that damages the new concrete. And my response was, yes, as always, deicing products will be used on the sidewalks to keep sidewalks safer pedestrians. Rick does look into new products that are safe for use and keep and keeps the sidewalk free of ice sidewalks, free of ice. The sidewalks have also been treated with salt guard, which protects concrete from the concrete from moisture intrusion and the effects of sodium based products that we use and salt deicing product that may get thrown onto the sidewalk surfaces secondary to DOT plowing and salting of the road. Number four, parking areas along the sidewalk on the corner of Maple Street and North Main is no longer adequate for parking and cars are out into the traveling, making it very unsafe with emergency vehicles, trucks and traffic attempting to get passed during busy times. I noticed this last weekend. And we were, we had been working on this. The span you mentioned is planned to be hashed and I, I put the, a picture of the detail from the plan, which is basically the span all along Swift Restaurant. And I've asked SLR to work with Mather and the DOT to prioritize this getting this done as soon as possible in the interim. Mather will work with the fire department to cone off the area and Rick will keep track of those, you know, make sure that cone off area is maintained. So that's up. I do think that there needs to be at least two more cones going down to the intersection. I think there's a gap that might encourage people to actually go in between the cones and the sidewalk. So we'll make sure we get that handled tomorrow. The difficulty is getting the, I guess, line painting companies are in very, very high demand right now. So we met, Rick and I met with Mather this afternoon and he's looking into, so the plan calls for them to be done in epoxy, which obviously lasts much, much longer. But we're, that may not be able to happen until the spring because of weather and the line painting companies. So we're going to prioritize and we've asked Mather to see if they can find somebody to do line painting that would suffice through the winter until the epoxy gets done. He's got to check with DOT and then see if he can find another line painting company that can do this. But I am worried about that. I'm worried about having you know, these sidewalks that have the crosswalk signs, but in a couple of places either worn out or no crosswalk lines across the road. So we've asked them to get the, that no parking area and all of the crosswalks striped for with this, it's not temporary, but it's a temporary solution because it's not epoxy. That's sort of what they call it. To, to prioritize those two things as soon as possible. So we'll hear back from him probably next week. Number five, while the sidewalk safety and beautification looks great, what about the growing eyesire at the highway department? What is the plan for all the material from the sidewalk project dumped and piled at the town garage? As you're aware, the town stormwater permit does not allow for site onsite processing. So will it just add to the already terrible look of the property? Add to the stormwater contamination issue already existing? The taxpayers were also taxed for the paving of the highway garage parking lot. Will the material be removed for this? So I wrote back, Rick has reviewed the storm order, storm water plan and does, did not find what you mentioned in your email and is following up with deep for more information. As he and I have both addressed numerous times before, Rick tests the, as the permit requires. The, he plans to use the materials for a number of unpaved town roads as well as repair of the entry to North Kent Road. The town garage paving project came fully, became fully funded this fiscal year to capital project. And yes, when that project happens, there will have to be a plan to get whatever is, whatever surfaces are getting paved to make, paved to make sure that those are absolutely clear for that, you know, the paving project.
Are there any alternate sites where we could store materials? That I, only reason I ask is I, over the course of the year and a half, a lot of people have commented that it's, it's kind of an ugly way to come into town.
Right, yep.
I don't know whether or not you know, there is a place out of sight which would not be too much. You know, obviously that's easy for the town crew to get to and use and they're not traveling with full trucks on the roads, but is there any other place anywhere in Kent that we could store stuff?
So I don't know of, you know, the town doesn't own much property. So it's not like we own something. You know, that's up. Big piece of property that's up out of the way where we could store these materials, but I can, I thought Rick was going to be on the meeting, but yeah, we can, I can talk to Rick about seeing if there are options.
We've talked about this. You know, we used to have the the old dump up and off the North Kent Road. Is there any place up in there that we could make arrangements, you know?
Yeah, I can, Rick and I can take a look and see if there's any, you know, maybe we can put together an MOU for use of that property. I don't, I don't, and I don't know what the requirements are, maybe tie as a because it's a former landfill. So I don't know if there are limitations on that sort of thing.
Yeah, I don't know either, but maybe we should at least see if there's possibilities out there.
Yeah, we can, Rick and I can follow up on that. So moving on to number five, tax refunds, we have nine refunds totaling one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents, and I will make a motion to approve those nine refunds for a total of one thousand one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand twelve dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Right.
Hi.
Treasures report, Barbara emailed this out. Just wanted to note that on the reverse side of that, she also included an ARPA dispersment report. So that gives, does provide some information. Do you want me to put it on screen share for a second?
Well, I I was hoping I would have seen this earlier than I did, but so I do have some questions.
Let me put it up on screen share. Give me one second. There we go. Okay.
So do we know, just under her notes down below, I had a question about the thousand dollar deductible for cemetery repair?
Okay.
What's that all about?
So there was an accident where, and Joyce, if you can jump in here to fill any gaps, where the vehicle damaged fence at one of the cemeteries.
The insurance company is pursuing segregation. So if in fact we do get a refund from the other carrier, that'll be refunded to us.
Yeah, because I wouldn't think that we would have to pay for somebody else damaging the fence. So, okay, that would be a refund. Can you fill us in on the town hall elevator?
I can. The town hall elevator is the original elevator to the building and the equipment is no longer serviceable. We've noticed an increase in the elevator becoming inoperable when we have a little power blip. If the power goes out, the elevator is inoperable. We have to have the service tech come out and it costs us anywhere from twelve hundred to about eighteen hundred for him to come out to reset it. So the new they're going to upgrade the equipment so that it'll be serviceable and it won't go out every time the electricity goes out.
Okay. Um. So the fifteen thousand that went out to the land use administrator upon retirement. Shouldn't we have thought of that back? Because we knew that she was going to be retiring. Shouldn't that have been part of our thinking? Were we just caught short?
Um. I mean, it's, it's tough because if the there was, we hadn't, you know, the board wasn't notified of any intended official retirement. So I mean, maybe from a crystal ball standpoint, we should have put something in there, but not knowing if the position was gonna be vacated or when, because that's, that is, that's how we figure out how much the payout would be. It's a little bit difficult to do that.
Okay, good. So it seems like everything else is pretty much online as far as, as our budget goes.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to note that the ROV the compensation line is at what does it say sixty-two point one percent? And what we've, what we've, what I've seen in, in having conversations with Therese is that the the turnover, the changeover. And, you know, she's coming into the position new and coming in immediately to the primary. So there was a, there is a very steep learning curve, which required a significant number of hours increased to prepare and to, you know, learn about all of the pieces and parts that, that come with the job. So I expect that we will see a, you know, a decline in the number of hours. Once we, you know, now that we're done with this, elect this big election and, you know, hopefully things will start to quiet down a little bit and there won't be so many hours being put in. But that was for future, that's definitely an identified gap or, you know, something that should be budgeted for, but we didn't we didn't understand what would, you know, what she was coming into, how much, you know, time that she was going to have to spend in the office. So just something to keep an eye on.
And the, and the other question was the municipal revenue sharing were six thousand plus over budget?
Yeah, I have to check back with Barbara on that.
Okay. Glenn, do you have any questions on the front side of?
No, I'm good there.
Okay.
Oops, sorry, I scrolled to the other side. So this was basically the, a status of where she is right now as far as dispersments.
So I have a couple of questions here. The direct recommended allocations that we originally said, there's a note under there, the two of them applied for additional funding.
Yep.
Was that given to them?
Um, I'd have to check back with Barbara.
Because I would think that that was not, you know, that would be something that should come back to us for discussion.
Um, it would actually go back, I believe, to the ARPA committee. And then so they could make recommendation.
Well, I mean, ultimately the three of us are who's, you know, um, so I, I would like to know more, more about that, you know? Raise a red flag for me.
Does the ARPA subcommittee still exist or did we not expand that?
We did not. We held off, sort of for this possibility.
I mean, I, I think that you know, the board of selectmen has at this stage of the game, as much or not more responsibility to oversee things than the committee itself. We followed their recommendations with the pools and whatnot, but as things happen and come up such as looking at a place for money for the Swift House. If there is money available in ARPA, that to me is a source. And so I'm curious to see. You know, we, we said things could roll over, but if, if there were only fourteen individuals and families that applied. That would that should be no more than seventy thousand. It should be thirty thousand left over from a hundred thousand toward individuals and families. That might be an area where we can look for, you know, overall, I think there's some ARPA funds that we could use to meet the need of the Swift House to get this architectural study going.
Yeah, I don't know if that's an eligible use. And I, I think the issue is that she's gonna, she's projecting a shortfall, actually, that if she goes forward with the way that it's laid out here. So why don't we have her follow up with us?
Yeah, that was my question to Eugene there. So that ending place box there. So that's, if all of that's used for that's unused so far for individual families, unused for business, but we're over for NFP application deficit. So that, that ten thousand sixteen, that's if we spend all of this, we are above and beyond the four hundred.
Right. So she's gonna, she actually talked about this at Board of Finance last night and she will go back and so she's been following a very process and, you know, very fair process from the beginning. So she's, her plan is to go back and look at the remaining applications and do an audit of, you know, maybe she, one of the things that she mentioned last night was maybe she would look at when those, the outstanding applications were received and do a first come, first served kind of thing. So she'll be going back and looking at that, those remaining applications, obviously, because we can't go over. So she will be going back and reviewing them.
Well, that ending place, the ten thousand, that's including if to seventeen thousand more than was directly distributed to them at first?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's what I don't think that she would leave that seventeen thousand dollars out of this.
No, so I mean, if she, you know, that.
I'm pretty sure it's included in this.
So that's why there's a ten thousand dollar deficit of the four.
Why don't we have, why don't we have Barbara follow up? I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Barbara. Let's do that.
Okay.
So under new business. RFP for architect to provide a needs assessment of the Swift House. Do we have Zan on yet? I don't see her yet. So, um. Zan sent me some information. I can put this on screen share. I also had a conversation with John Russ, I'm sorry, John Worthington today. And it just so happens that Park and Rec recently developed an RFP for the, their playground project that's out there right now. So I was able to take some of that content and I think we will actually take more of that content, but some of the things that we need to decide on. Well, so let's go, just go through this first. So the initial, that initial paragraph where we're seeking proposals. We're going to take and I think this is the way we should do it, the Swift House Task Force Report and Action Plan. The ADA checklist and then the draft implementation plan. Those will all be included as documents of, for reference for this, for bidders. I think that makes sense. And then just reading down to the scope of work. So this is to provide, basically to do a needs assessment. Right? So it would include things like a master floor plan. Not sure if we need to do elevations, but that was one of the things that Zan included. Basic specifications for renovations that comply with ADA and Connecticut Building Code and sufficient enough to seek reasonably accurate quotes for the work to be done. I added in consideration of use for use of green building materials and systems as well as smart technologies should be included wherever possible and practical. And then the comprehend that last note was included, which I think is, it guides people not how, how detailed they should go, which is not that detailed. I'm kind of on the fence whether we need to do these things as separate because they're all included in the ADA checklist and the implementation plan, but I don't think it makes any difference if we keep it or, or get rid of it. And then we included an updated serving kitchen, improved more open floor plan that is flexible coatroom closet. And while there is one there now, we want to ensure that there that, that the design includes one. So they may have to get rid of the current coat closet to comply for ADA for the bathroom, but that just means that we need a coat closet somewhere else. So that's why that's left in separately. Storage for folding stackable chairs, same thing. There's a little tiny back room where the, that stuff is put now, but if that needs to get repurposed under the compliance and building codes and everything. We know that we still want storage for chairs. So this modification of interior front stairs, first floor to second floor to meet Connecticut code. I, I don't really know if we should be including this, if we're not going to be providing access to. Providing access to the second floor because the whole second floor is um. Just a. A bee's nest. Um, we have, you know. Recommendation from John Worthington that that. Providing access to the second floor would be very difficult. There's, so. That's one thing that we need to talk about um. Electrical service upgrade to combine first and second floor service and increase capacity. I think that's fine. We need to. Upgrade the HVAC to a modern, efficient system and then proper insulation throughout, including the basement and crawl space is if there are more than one. So um. There's sort of two schools of thought, whether or not to include a max for um. Or a not to exceed. Some folks I spoke to said, you don't want to include. Any amount because then. You're gonna get bids that are all six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. But if we do put it in. Then at least people know. What we're willing or what we are able to spend, keeping in mind that we have not. Actually. Found this money yet. So um. I don't know what the board wants to do. And then um, that part down further was. I pulled that from the Park and Rec. RFP. So a couple of other things that we would need to include, which is the um, instruction for bidders, which I'm gonna take right from this one that. Jared did so that it's, we know that it's all been reviewed by the attorney. Submission instructions, dates, and then we. Created a fillable form that would, you know, pretty much be the same thing that we would use. So a couple of things that. We need to discuss what the, if we were to approve this tonight. And we were able to get it um. Posted and advertised, let's say tomorrow. How long do we want to have the um? You know, what's the deadline for submissions? The um, Park and Rec, I think, so they put this. Out November eighth, the deadline is. Friday, December ninth, so that's a month. Do we want it? Do we want to do the same thing? I think a month is a. A good amount of time to. Make sure that it's advertised and people have time to. You know, people are gonna need to. Pull together information. They may need to do a site walk, which is also on my list of questions. But as far as submission, do we want it? Do we want to just agree that it will be one month?
For for a project of this scope and magnitude, I mean, how 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 long are our RFPs out there? I mean, for a month, is is there a standard? Time or minimum time that we have?
Um, I, there's no minimum time as far as I know. Um. Again, we're not asking for, you know, full technical drawings. We're asking for assessment and. You know, floor plan, basic specifications. That sort of thing, but they do have to go through the whole. You know, those three documents. The ADA checklist is really the big one, so that would take a little bit of time to go through. Um. I did not look to see if there's some sort of. Average time I can, John Worthington and I are probably gonna talk tomorrow. I can ask him.
And then two questions about the seven thousand. I mean, um, uh, we're reasonably sure that this project uh, seven thousand is uh, useful for this project. Uh, it it would it be more or less? And where are we going to get the money from for this? Because we talked about that last time. So we're, we you just said that we might approve this tonight, but um, we don't know where the money's coming from.
Right, so one of the um. One of the things that this, I believe this was an addition by Town Council, this um. That last sentence, please note that the issuance of this RFP does not guarantee that a contract will be let for the project described. I don't. Know if it's the right number. Um. There's been so many changes.
We do know, so I think we should leave it out. And I'm not sure that we should even consider. Modifying stairs to the second floor. Okay, like you said, it's a whole, you know, it's storage space up there, basically. But if you modify. A stairwell, then you have to meet modern code. If you leave things as is. You don't, you can still use it as storage, but.
And that also is gonna be, I mean, just. In itself is gonna, would be a. Big job. Because those stairs right now are, you know. I'm sure they're not to code.
No, but I I mean. The stairs in my house weren't to code, and if I had left them alone. They would have been fine. Soon as I took them down to. Reverse them. Building inspector said, now you have to meet code. So I'd move walls and things, but. I would think, I would think that most of the groups that want to use this want. The meeting space downstairs. And that's what we should concentrate on.
The upstairs was ever only used for an apartment, is that right? Years ago.
Years ago, there were apartments up there or one or two.
For a very, enough for a very long time, and none of the groups currently had, you know, used, used that in the recent past.
No, it hasn't been used in years. Joyce, was it ever anything besides that one apartment? Was there anything in that other room?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
So yes, I would, I would say if um, you know, if if it makes this process easier, if it brings the 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 cost. Of this proposal down, um, if we edit that out. I think it might be worthwhile.
So we've addressed that um. Deadline for submission. If we were able to get this posted tomorrow, would we want to do a month? Are we, do we want to talk about that? Do you want me to do some, I mean, if I do research, that's gonna put it off. You know, slim chance that we can all find time next week. Um, to have a special meeting to. To vote on this for what? I don't know if I'm even gonna. Really find anything that says definitively, no, it should be for, you know, three weeks, or it should be for seven weeks, or. I think one month is a a reasonable amount of time.
Given the time of year that it is, a one month would be reasonable. You have a lot of holiday time off.
You want to just make it. By the first of the year. It's a little more than a month, but. You've got two holidays in between.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a bad idea. By January first.
Okay with that.
What day is January first?
You don't want to make it on the first.
Right, it would be um. So that office. Um, let me just go to a calendar here.
September thirtieth is a Friday.
Right, so it should probably be. That Friday. Joyce, just. Shout out here, your thoughts.
When do you want it? I'm sorry.
So the thirtieth, December thirtieth is a Friday.
Or January sixth is a Friday.
I would do it the sixth.
Yeah.
Vacation, they might be gone the week of Christmas.
Yeah.
And it's not likely we'll get it out tomorrow because. We have to gather all this information and have it available as well, so it probably more likely wouldn't go out until Monday.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think the sixth makes some sense.
Okay. And then um. So in reading the um, the one for the playground, they are um, they have a scheduled, they've scheduled um, what's called a. A site walk. So that gives um, any bidders. The opportunity to, you know, like walk around the playground. But it's, there's one time, it's, you know. If you can make it, you can make it. If you can't, you can't. And it's an opportunity, you don't have to do it. So I think that would. I think that would be a good idea for us to do. Um. So they have it. They opened it on the eighth. So they did it a week and a half-ish. After. The. The first day. So if we did it. If we posted it, got it posted and advertised on Monday. Oh, where are we?
Do it either Wednesday or Thursday, November thirtieth or the first of December. That'd be a week plus, that'd be.
Well, our next Board of Selectmen meeting is on the first. Yeah, I think if we did it on the thirtieth. That would work. Does that? Joyce, any? Pinch points or conflicts for that?
I just looked at the calendar, it doesn't appear to be. And when you say we, who is we?
The royal we, we'd have to, we can figure that out.
I could.
I mean, it's not gonna be any masterful, you know. They're not gonna be able to take their teaspoons and their magnifying glasses through the building.
I'm asking, is it Board of Selectmen or is it this task force?
No, I think it could easily be either you or Rick or both of you, because Rick, you know, has certain, could probably answer certain questions. You can probably answer certain questions. Does not have to be a board. Okay. Activity, I think, you know, it's. It's just to allow them to see the inside of the building. And if any questions come up in that, at that time. You know, if somebody from the task force wants to be there, they're welcome to be there. But it's, it's, you know, it's not a big negotiating, open session for.
Right, so I wouldn't recommend. Having too many people there.
Yeah.
But I think opening it to the task force could create. Additional conflict or.
Yeah, and it's really not to convince anybody of anything. It's really just, this is the inside of the building. You know, you have a half an hour to walk through, and if you have any questions, let Rick or I know kind of thing.
I'd be willing to be there just to. Keep the door open. Joyce or Rick are busy.
Same with me, I could be around if needed.
All right, so we can, but we're, we all have consensus agreement that we want to offer. As part of the package, we want to offer one time where anybody can come in and. Do a site walk.
Right.
Yep.
The next um.
So are we gonna, are we gonna go back to? Would we add that as a line?
Yes, that would be, yeah, so there's a number of things, as I mentioned, that need to be added to this, but a lot of it is sort of boilerplate. Submission instructions um. Uh, important dates, which would be this pre-bid um, site walk. And then bid submission deadline and opening, it would be a public opening, so we would um, you know, slot that in on the calendar. And you give the basic information that it, you know, will be done in the town hall. Conference room. Um, and then the form, which is, we already created the form, so um, there's just, you know, it doesn't. I'd have, I have to flex the form so it doesn't say playground equipment, so that it, you know, meet, it matches what we're um, you know, what the RFP says, but it's just a. Fillable form so that we're getting um, you know, nice, clean. Documents instead of handwritten stuff. And again, all of this has already gone to town council, so that's a a benefit of, you know, using the wording and, you know. What's on this one? So there, you know, just a couple of other things. Hey, Zan. You're on mute.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had trouble getting on the mic. Yeah.
So we were um. We had gone over this initial. Page, thank you so much for. Providing a lot of this additional information. Couple of the things that we already covered was, we're gonna um, remove the modification of the interior stairs.
I'm I'm sorry, you're gonna, you're gonna eliminate that?
Because we're. The second floor can't be used, it's really just gonna be used for storage, so in.
I know, but my, my concern and why that was included was. That, you know, the stairs are not to code now, and if it's used for storage and and. People are storing things up there and have trouble with the stairs, I didn't want there to be any liability for the town. Also. The plan that we had um. Proposed, the stairs are adjacent to. An opening that we wanted to create between the room that the, the um. Board of Selectmen, not the um, sorry, the um. Uh, sit the. Chamber of Commerce uses and the main room. And and if we're going to open that space between, it would be the operative time. To make the stairs compliant, so that if anybody needed to store things upstairs, they weren't at risk, so. I mean, maybe we could keep that open and see if it. It's because they're not code compliant now, they're very, very steep. And if you're storing things and carrying boxes upstairs and putting them in. Storage, then. It's, you know, I mean, could we look at that as a possibility and see? If it works into the plan? It wouldn't mean, I'm the, I I would anticipate. That there would be a sign on the door at the bottom of the stairs. That is not open to the public or now whatever. So they're not in common usage. But if we're doing work in that area anyway, it's the best and most efficient time to look at the stairs.
So we could add um. Something that says, please note that the, and I'm pulling this from the Park and Rec one. Please note the Swift House Task Force has also expressed interest in the following. Improvements, and we could leave it in under that.
Okay, that would be fine.
Okay.
And so we could look at that and and an architect could assess. The difficulty appropriateness, cost, et cetera.
Glenn and Rufus, what are your thoughts on that?
I I guess that would be okay, it would um, you know, I. I think that uh. You know, our 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 main concern should be the first floor.
Well, yeah, the task force's main concern is the first floor.
Right.
But depending upon. How the work is phased and when it's done. Improving, you know, if the second floor is really only going to be used for storage. You want to be able to store things safely. And the other possibility and consideration is that. Depending upon, you know, according to. The fire marshal. There would be, if you have over a certain number of people on the first floor, you're supposed to have a second restroom. And there is a restroom at the top of the stairs. That I'm not proposing that we do anything with now. But if the stairs are already done, it would be easy enough to make that second floor restroom operative. And then.
But getting into that restroom, you're talking. Another, I think there's a step into that weird little anteroom, and then there's another step into the bathroom still. You're talking about more, you know.
You actually, I'm not talking about doing that work now, but just making it potentially available for future adjustment.
But if we make it accessible, then we have to make it accessible. We can't, it's not a half.
No, I'm not proposing that we make it accessible now. But if the stairs were made code compliant. Then at a future date. That restroom, that bathroom is right off the landing at the top of the stairs. And the rest of the whole second floor could be closed off for storage. But you could have a bathroom upstairs so that you could have larger capacity on the first floor. Just thinking ahead. Anyway, it doesn't have to be done now, but I'd like to have an architect look at it.
Rufus and Glenn, does it make sense to put in that section? Of, you know, the, um, that I just mentioned, that the task force has also expressed interest in the following. Improvement, and we'll put that down in sort of a second section.
Yeah, but down to this.
Makes sense.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, you know.
It's not Plan A, but.
It's not necessarily Plan A, but it's, it's part of. I, I think Zan had it hit it on the head, you know, it, it may be. More cost effective to do a couple of things.
Yeah.
So enough.
It would be harder to do that later. I think.
So another, um. Piece we talked about was deadlines, so we all consensus agreed. That, um. We're hoping to get it advertised and, um, up on the website, et cetera. By Monday. And then the deadline would be, um. January sixth, close of business, because the way the holidays are falling and everything. That a month, um, initially we're talking about a month, but because there's, you know, the three-ish major holidays coming in here. For actually, um.
Does.
And then, uh, New Year's Day. Falls on, it makes sense to do it on the sixth.
So if we wait a month for feedback, I mean, I think there are few enough architects in the area that we could make them aware of this, and they could take a look at it and see if they're interested. Um, if we wait a month for responses. Would we miss the? Deadline for budgeting anything in the coming year for the ADA compliant entrance and bathroom that would allow us to reopen the building?
We'd be just getting started on the operational budget season.
Um.
You'd not make the capital, capital is what, December first, Joyce?
That's when it's due, yes.
I mean, my hope personally is that we could. Find a way to make, get the ADA work done in the coming calendar, the coming fiscal year. So that we could reopen the building, which is now that are already closed for three years.
So just going back to this, the. The deadline.
Mm-hmm.
I think this, you know, it, it's an extra, you know, week and a half ish, but there's also plenty of days where. People are going to be away and there's, you know, multiple holidays, so we're going to go with January sixth for the deadline. Um, the, another piece was, um, do we do a site walk through? And we all agreed that that would be a, um, a good idea to offer that in the bid documents.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be doing that. And then what we hadn't, uh, addressed yet was where to advertise. So my thoughts are website newsletter, town account, social media. Do we want to put something in the Waterbury Republican? Um, we would also send it to the cog. And, um, I don't know, there's probably a, a state architectural association of sorts that we could, um.
Well, architects have to be licensed, and I don't know if the licensing bureau has the addresses of licensed architects, but we could look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think the town is going to. Generate letters that we would send to architects, and there's, there must be, um, you know, places online where. Architects check in to, just like, you know, contractors, I'm sure.
Um, I'm not aware of any, I mean, I think architects sort of wait for people to approach them for the most part. But, um. I mean, we can certainly make it known to local architects.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I mean, I, I already have a short list of architects locally that may or may not be interested. Um.
So anything that we're missing, we can do a, a brief search to see if there are any state associations, but we'll do website newsletter, social media. Do the main question, Glenn Rufus, is do we want to put this in the Waterbury?
That's a. I don't know whether we'd get. A response from.
Right, so maybe our, our money, actually, I just have this thought when I saw Lila's Brady Bunch pain, come on. Um, maybe we should write a short press release. That we're, um. Doing this, and then we normally send that out to Lakeville Journal, Waterbury Republican.
Yeah.
And Hurst Media, so that they would pick up. Um, this and, and do a piece on in the newspaper, so it's not buried in the back in the classifieds.
That, that sounds like.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, Zan, um, we're just, I just want to get the board's thoughts on this.
I think that's a better approach.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I agree with you, I think that's a better approach too, and then we might get some attention.
Okay, we can do that. Um.
I'd like to look back at the Swift House Task Force report that we did in February of twenty one. And see if the plan, the action plan recommendations include. All the things that the current Swift House. I mean, we want, might want to supplement that.
So that, um, up at the top, I don't know if you can see that, okay, on the, it's a little bit small, I apologize.
Mm-hmm.
Um, up here.
Yeah.
So. There, there will be three reference documents that will go with the package, the, the RFP, and it will be that, um, report and action plan. The ADA checklist that we completed and the draft, um, ADA implementation plan, so that they have. They'll have everything that, that we've compiled so far.
The draft implementation plan. Um, I would not want to send that out because it has estimated prices in it already that are just.
We would remove those.
Yeah.
I think it would make sense to.
It also has a timeline that I think. That is not really established yet, so if it could remove the timeline and the, and the estimated prices, then that would be okay.
That makes sense, because that's.
My, my understanding is that the implementation plan. Has prior, is prioritized. And that access and restroom are the first and most important priorities. And the other things that need to be implemented can be done over time and phased in. I mean, that's what I was told by, um, John Worthington, they don't all have to be done in order for the building to be reopened. Are you in agreement with that, Jean, after? Your meetings with John, because that's what he told me.
So I, you know, I. I think of it really, and this is become, from all the reading, is that they prioritize the one, two, three, and four priority areas based on. What needs to be done first, and then what needs to be done second, needs to be done third, needs to be fourth. I think any. Architect designer who understands the ADA compliance is going to understand. That, um, there's no timeframe on it, there's no dates or anything on it.
But when it comes to. Trying to put together, and this is in terms of the task force's final report to the selectmen and the board of finance and the town. When it comes to prioritizing those things. I would anticipate that the cost of the. Access and the restroom would be included in the initial priorities. And that things that come later and can be phased might be able to be taken care of. Within a normal budget as, you know, annual improvements over time, but not all done at once. Is that your understanding?
Um. Jean, if I can speak, um.
Yeah.
I think, Zan, your example of the stairway, and sometimes it's more cost effective to do things. All at the same time, some of those ADA things, while you consider it a priority later, it makes sense to do while you're.
Right.
Doing some of these things, so.
If you're doing any other improvements that would, that would. Impede upon it, yeah.
Right, so I think that needs to be looked at. In that respect as well, so.
That's part of what I was hoping we would work with an architect on, and I agree with you, I think you're right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I don't, I don't think there's any, um. Any detriment, including that taking off the, obviously the cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, estimates. Because again, they're, they're going to be using the same, they're going to be applying the same. ADA guidance that we're applying and. And I, I just don't want to. Um. Paint anybody into a corner. On, you know, on submitting a. A proposal, I think the way that it's laid out here gives them our. The list of improvements gives us, gives them the reference documents. Um, oh, and we're taking out this, um. Did we agree that we wanted to take out the seven thousand dollars? Or leave it in?
I thought we should take it out.
Okay.
Instead of include everything above, I think it should just say the scope of work above.
Okay.
Um, did you guys see Melissa's chat?
No, I'm very minimized, sorry.
So they do have classifieds for RFPs. And RFQs.
Okay, Connecticut chapter of the American Institute of Architects.
Yeah. So that, thank you to Melissa for. Doing timely research.
Jean, can you, can you put that back? I have one, I have a question.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't, I wasn't able to make my Zoom window any bigger with it up. Um. Okay.
I think under the updated serving kitchen, I think you should take away likely relocated, including new appliances and storage. I think that should be up to the architect. If it needs to be relocated, he's not going to price appliances.
Right.
Likely relocated, no, he should include appliances.
No, he shouldn't. That would be something, I bet. That's, we're not going to, or any of that sort of stuff. There's a lot of things that aren't budgeted in this. By doing this, you're not even considering. You're not considering any of the windows, you're not considering the exterior, so there are many expenses that aren't included in this. I think appliances should not be in, under an architect.
Well, you're just like, we would not include, um. A, a new inventory of folding chairs.
No, no, I'm not including, I'm just storage, a space for them. We're not including furniture and furnishings, but. You have to include major appliances in a kitchen because they have to be built in, and they also require power supply, and you need to know if you're going to put an induction stove top in, for example. What are the power requirements for that? For any electric upgrades. So, you know, you can't design a kitchen without knowing the space requirements and the. Power requirements for refrigeration and, and, um, anything that requires heat. So they really should be in there. I mean, it doesn't, they can recommend, you don't have to.
Why don't we?
Brand name, and, but you just need to have the space requirements and the power requirements.
I respectfully disagree. I think that if we just simply tell them. The basic appliances, that it should not be included in the RFP. But that's up to the board.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should include appliances. Um.
Okay, updated serving kitchen, but you don't design a kitchen without designing a space for the appliances.
Well, you've only got so much space there anyway, so.
And I, and I think likely relocated should be there as not a given, but. An option. Because both of the options that we have talked about within the task force for a kitchen would change its location.
Yeah, but I, I, I agree with Joyce, I think. Letting them, you know, they're the designers, if they come up with a fantastic design that actually leaves and creates a new. Updated serving kitchen, but it's ostensibly in the same.
Okay, well, we.
Area, and. I think it's easy, I think it's.
We have.
Open to leave it out.
We have a plan that within the task force, we have reviewed both in the first task force and the second task force, and we have agreed. That that works very well as an operative plan. So my thought was to get a qualified architect to look at the existing recommendation. And see if it meets the requirements of ADA and building code. And if they think that's the best plan, it, it's not carved in stone and nobody is, you know, demanding that it be done this way. But as a starting point, and if that works, let's work with it, and if they have a better idea, we're open to new and better ideas. But I don't, I don't want them to think they have to absolutely start from ground zero and. With. You know, without the input that we are willing to provide to them. So. You know, I don't. I mean, it doesn't matter, an updated serving kitchen, but. None of us think it should be where it is. Uh, for many and various reasons. It's hard to get to. It's, you know, small and inoperative, it. Is in, open to a passageway that goes to another room, so.
Reality, it's not actually a kitchen.
Yeah.
It's an alcove that happens to have a sink and a.
And a stove and a.
Small stove.
Yeah, right.
I think we should leave this up to.
Oh, why don't, why don't you write?
Bidders and.
You can take.
Let them bring the, bring. Then bring the bring the designs and the bids to us.
Okay, uh so can can we leave likely relocated in there as as a suggestion?
I would say updating serving kitchen and storage.
But not updating the existing kitchen and storage. Give it providing a new updated kitchen and storage. I mean, that's why it says likely relocated, because I didn't want them to think it has, they have to make a miracle happen in the alcove. That's now the kitchen.
I would think that. Uh, an architect worth his salt would say, can't do it in that space, let's do it over here, but that's their decision.
Okay.
You know. But I, and I don't think we need to get into the new appliances because that. Is getting into too much.
Part of the design.
Detail at this stage of the game.
Right.
Okay, but we do need to cost them out. So, I mean.
When we get there, we'll.
Yeah.
That's the, you know, what'll be part of the process.
Uh, and storage wasn't in the original.
Right, I added that.
Storage for the kitchen?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we instead updated serving kitchen? Can we say new serving kitchen, so it doesn't sound like it has to be in the same place? And if you wanna take out likely relocated?
Yeah.
I I just don't want them to think they have to have it where it is.
Is the board okay with that?
That's fine.
So we figured out, uh Joyce, did you have other questions? Sorry. I I did, because you you have HVAC already in the capital plan, and I and I'm not sure you wanna duplicate that. Right, I left it in there because it's coming in this coming fiscal year. Right. So I figured it would. Those things would coincide.
They should evaluate that because part of um. I mean, proper insulation throughout, uh this is. I I don't know, we should look at that, but. The place that really needs insulation is the rear room that has none whatsoever. And there's a, there's a um crawl space below that. That needs a rat slab so that it's not just dirt. Um, attracting animals, and it needs insulation under the floor. So that. And it needs to have the HVAC extended to that space.
Right.
But proper insulation throughout, I I don't think we're looking at tearing the walls apart and putting new insulation in. I mean, that's a very major job.
But I I can't imagine that we wouldn't. Do all of this work. And not a address. If there's any insulation behind the walls, and I know.
It was.
Going on with the insulation in the walls in my house, which is the same um. Circa. Or similar circa. And that insulation throughout. I mean, we can add, we can add something, you know, I don't, I I took out the rat slab um. Because that's a sort of specific.
Well, it's a, it's it's a need that we've identified in that, because otherwise. The back room is not usable in winter at all, it's freezing.
Right, so that would be part of the proper insulation.
Yeah, but but proper insulation throughout means tearing apart all the walls and. Looking at re-insulating everything. I mean, I think that is way more major than any of us imagined.
But I can't imagine that we would upgrade an HVAC. And not look at. If we're gonna put in a an HVAC that properly heats and cools the building. But not address or at least find out what's going on with the insulation. I don't.
Could we separately, separate and apart from the, what the architect is going to do? Could we have one of the energy evaluations from the the power company? That they provide as a service, where they look at drafts and installation and. Windows and what you can do to improve the envelope of your building. But I I mean, if we're telling an architect that they have to. Do samples of the walls and look at what's there and determine a whole new. The whole envelope. I mean, that is so much more than I imagined in this proposal. It's a whole separate category of skill set and knowledge and. Um, expertise and. Construction. I'm, you know, uh if you take all the clabs off the outside, you could insulate from the outside. But, you know, nobody's talking about doing that.
It was insulated back in the. Se- seventies and eighties.
I mean, we should, yeah, we we, you know, I don't know. I mean, Wes Wirek has did a whole series of plans and elevations for the building, which I have. Which he's been kind enough to give to us. Um, I could ask him at the time that he worked on it if he, if there was any insulation work involved. But I don't see any evidence that the walls were taken apart and redone.
So Glenn Rufus, what do you want to do here? Do you want me to take this out and then just put the rat slab?
I mean, it's the rear room, it's the one room in the rear that needs very much, and also.
Isn't half of the basement dirt as well, though?
No, the base, the basement has a concrete floor. It has some crawl spaces that are. You know, maybe there's a way that they could be insulated better, but. I don't think they affect the overall that much, because they're really close to the outside, and we've repointed the whole foundation. So we don't have drafts in the foundation walls anymore. Um, the the only other area that might need new insulation is if we were to use the. That uh the what that's called the pantry, where the um. Uh, that's used now for chair and table storage, and you know, there're shelves in there for. Sort of serving things and so forth, storage. The floor there. Is tilted and. Uh, my, if we're gonna use that space differently. I think under that, the floor should be lifted. And have insulation put under it and around the foundation, in inside the foundation. And a new floor put down, but it's a very small space, so it's just those two rear spaces. That are in need, because the basement is relatively warm now that it has a concrete floor. And it, the foundation has been repainted, repointed, and that's where the furnace is or the boiler. Um, so that, that really helped, that was done. I don't know exactly when it was done, but Marge Smith could tell you, because. Offices there, and it made a huge difference to the heating of the what's now the room that the chamber uses. So I don't think the rest of the building is desperately in need, it's just the rear room and that pantry room.
Does everyone see the um, the meeting chat? Donna Hayes has written something?
Yeah.
So, energy code, is that a part of this um? This consideration, energy code throughout the entire house? Or just in a back room?
Um, I think you'd wanna look at the energy code through the whole house, it's part of, part of what you have to look at.
I, I'm, I'm not familiar with the local energy code. Is that a town energy code?
Donna, you wanna um?
Yeah, no, there is no local energy code. It's the energy code that the federal government has put in place under the Obama administration. Uh, typically, what happens is anytime you open up a wall and do a certain amount of opening. Then you have to bring it up to code, so an architect will know all of that.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, you're you're talking about something that the architect.
Right.
Should know about the energy code.
Right, we're not talking about opening up walls. If we were to open up a wall, of course, we would improve the the insulation. But I think the only, from, you know, spending a lot of time in this building. The only areas that really badly need it are the back room, which is over a dirt crawl space. With no insulation on the floor or the walls. And um that one pantry space, which is also over a crawl space. Um.
I think, Zan, that that.
How about instead of throughout, how about just saying as needed?
So, um.
I I still think you're missing the point.
Yeah.
That, that's all, that's all I was pointing out.
Donna, I'm just gonna ask you a a quick question up here where it says comply with ADA requirements, Connecticut building codes. Could you recommend adding that there so that it's? So it would be called federal, federal energy code?
Yep, compliance with the energy, with the current energy code. And every architect's gotta provide that on any plans that they submit.
If I heard you correctly, Donna, then that only applies to areas where you're already opening and changing walls.
It all depends on the amount of work that's gonna be done on the inside. So if you're, so the architect should understand, if he's looking for ADA compliance. He has to be also looking for compliance for the other codes as well. So I just, I don't think that you need to be really specific. If he's a good architect, he knows what the energy code is. That's all I'm basically saying.
Great.
Jean, I think we should leave it as, you know. Just.
Can you say as necessary?
Okay, I think we're getting bogged down here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can you say where that line is? It's not up here anymore, but instead of throughout, say as necessary. Or as compliant with codes or whatever you wanna say, so that it doesn't make it sound like the entire building has to be re-insulated.
That's not what. It's making it sound like.
You could change that to um.
Provide compliance with the federal energy code.
Right, address. Or.
Address compliance.
Address, address insulation as it relates to the federal energy code.
That's fine.
Joyce, was there anything else? Sorry.
No. Can you, can you bring the document back up again? So just give it one last look. Are you, you're changing then updated serving kitchen to? New serving kitchen?
Yep.
Okay, um. Okay. Um, so are you leaving the may not exceed 7,000 in there?
We're, we agreed to remove that, correct?
Okay.
Right.
Um. Okay, everything above. The above.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Get that removed, and I'm in PDF mode right now, so it's just simpler to do it back inward.
Okay. Uh, the town of Kent reserves the right to reject any, oh, okay, I'm sorry, misread it, fine. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
So we'll make those changes, get the form attached. Um, get the other documents all organized and get everything up by Monday. And we'll write a press release, do all the other things. I.
Jean, can you um send the document to me when you have a chance, just so I put her record and share it with the rest of the committee?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we're keeping the. Site visit on the 30th? Is that what David decided?
On the 30th of when?
November.
Okay.
Yep.
November 30th. Can it be November 29th? Possibly. I would be really grateful if it could, because. I have a ride into New York and a doctor's appointment on the 30th there, and I, and I'm flying out on the first. Could we do it the 29th?
So I.
We're just looking at this as where we're not really gonna be getting into detailed conversations with these folks. We're opening up the building to allow them to go through.
Uh huh.
And. Take their measurements, whatever they want, see the space and go on their way.
Um, okay, we, I would like to have the opportunity to. Introduce them to the plan that the both the first and the second task force have agreed to.
No, because that's um.
As a, as a possible starting point.
I don't, I I, we, we should not, because not everybody is gonna come to that. Sightwalk, it's not a requirement of for the bids, and we should, this is. What we're asking is for them to bring us a, a, do an assessment and bring us a design. I don't think that we should. Skew or, I mean, that's, you know, giving a recommended or or a.
What we had, what we had wanted them to do is to evaluate the design. That we have. Thought would be reasonable. And let us, and if they have a better design, we're all ears and eyes and open to improvements. But if they, if they feel that the design that we're. Suggesting as a possibility is workable and compliant with ADA and codes. Then it's a much easier project for them. And muscle, much less time consuming than starting from base zero and coming up with something different. I'd like them to. Evaluate the proposed plan, not that it has to be adopted and that they can't come up with some. Not that it has to be adopted and that they can't come up with something better. But I, I'd like them to know about it because we've put a lot of time and thought into it and. You know, it may or may not work.
But we haven't, we haven't seen this.
And it hasn't been discussed with the board at all. I think the, the way that we're.
In fact, you have seen it, you have a copy of it in your office that Joyce scanned that's in your records. I mean, it's just a sketch, it's not a proper architect's drawing. But it's, it is a plan. And we've.
I've never seen it.
Well.
I've never seen it. And I, I think that this sort of derails us off to a different. Place if we're actually going to be giving them a suggested floor plan. Which is not what we've been talking about for this whole conversation.
I mean, we. We were going to give them a plan to evaluate. And to. Adapt or change or go in a completely different direction if they wish. But just a plan to take a look at and see if it works according to. The ADA and building code requirements. And. You know, to disregard or to improve upon. I mean, we can make.
If I was an architect, I'd be less likely to be interested in bidding on something that I'm, you know, I, I would want.
Do your own thing.
Do my own thing. So I think. You know, we, we do this and see what we get.
Okay, well, that, that hadn't been our assumption, that our assumption was that we were. Asking them to evaluate and adjust as necessary, but. They can start from scratch, that's okay.
So do we want to make a motion to?
Can we have the walkthrough? Is it possible to do it on the twenty ninth?
So the, again, like Rufus was saying, it, it's not meant for any conversation, really. Joyce or Rick would go over and open up the building for a, you know, stated length of time. That's in the RFP. You know, if somebody had a question. I don't know, like, is this connected to the sewer or where does the sewer line come in? You know, where, where is the sewer line out on the street, you know, basic questions like that, but they're gonna see what they're gonna see and. Like Rufus said, they can make their measurement, so it's not a place to have a. Especially because not everybody may come to this, nobody may come.
Right.
So we have to leave it as fair and, and, you know, even.
We have a set of measured architectural drawings, you know, that have been prepared, that were done and paid for by the town. That were done by Wes Wyrick's office. Their complete floor plans of the existing building. You know, I'm presuming because that work was paid for. And the drawings, you know, should be in the property of the town. That those could be provided, it makes a huge difference in terms of time and energy on the part of. An architect if they can work from existing drawings instead of measuring everything and starting from scratch. But I don't know exactly, I would want to ask an architect what. The ethics of providing other drawings or if there's any issue of ownership. But, you know, we have, we have those sets and Wes has been very generous in providing them to us and we've worked from them with our planning already.
We can check with Wes and then. Included in the package.
I mean, he, he has. He would be interested in, in working with us on this, I know, but. And it, it should go out to bid, but. It's just somewhat tentative.
Zan, the other reason we chose the thirtieth was. We wanted to give some time for people who are getting. Knowledge of it the week before to.
Yeah.
A setup if they wanted to come and look at the building. So.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's stick with Wednesday.
I mean, it would be nice to be able to meet the people that are interested, but I guess that's not a possibility.
So are we ready to?
Maybe could someone else, anyone else from the task force? Be available on the thirtieth?
But it's, we have to be very, very careful to not even give the perception of. Of influence. By anybody, by the representatives of the task force, by the Board of Selectmen. I think it just makes sense just to have. Rick and or Joyce be over there, unlock the door. If they have any basic questions, they can ask them of the staff. They, they understand what, from an ethical standpoint, what they can and can't get into. And so it will be a fair and equitable process.
Once those who are interested indicated interest and. You know, and give a bid price. What other steps, I mean, as the, we, do we have an opportunity to evaluate the reputation of the architects, the. Meet with them and interview them? Is there, I mean, it's not, I'm presuming that you don't pick an architect just based on price. Have you talked at all about the process, that process?
Um, no, but it does include. The bids will be evaluated based on the best overall proposal and value. So those are the two things that will get included. There is in the. The form, we do ask for three references. So that would be part of the.
I would want to see, you know, if they have a website, the, the, I'd like to have a chance for us to take a look at their work. You know, what their experience is. I wouldn't want to just pick somebody based on bid price.
So are we ready to? Entertain a motion that might look like. Accept the. Draft RFP document with changes noted. To be. Posted and advertised by Close the Business on Monday, the twenty first.
So moved.
Great, because I didn't write that down. Accept the draft RFP document with changes noted and posted and advertised by Close the Business, Monday, eleven twenty one.
And that would also include the, a small press release.
Yeah.
Go to.
Yep.
Areas. And I think we should also. Include what Melissa included.
Yep, I already.
Yeah.
Clicked out to there, so it saved that. Alrighty. Any other questions?
Do we get a second on that?
Does the, does the committee have the opportunity to participate in the selection?
Do we get a second on the motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Didn't you? Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, I thought Rufus.
Rufus already seconded it, yeah.
Yeah.
Just in case you didn't, I was seconding too.
I moved it, but I didn't know.
It's, it's second.
Either way. Okay.
Back, back to the selection process. Can we, can it be collaborative? Can the committee be a participant in the selection?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Sure. Righty, anything further from the board? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for the discussion. And thank you for the help on this, Zan, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Finally, off screen share, I think I have.
And, and don't forget to send me the draft if you would please.
Yep.
Thanks.
Seven point two recommendation from the land use administrator for the assistant land use administrator.
I move that we accept the recommendation for. As presented.
I've got some questions for, for I think Jean Rufus and Ty actually about this. So, so, so Jean and Rufus, so, so in, in the recent past, we have. Advertised for social services and park and rec. And just wanted to know. Generally, what was the length of time that we advertised for positions? Because it just seems to me that. Not too long ago, I think it was two meetings ago that we, that we agreed on the, the job description for the assistant land use. Position and, and just how, how long have we advertised for this position? And is there a standard, is, is, is there a minimum time that we should advertise for town municipal positions?
So we haven't had a, there's no, nothing, no policy about that. I would say generally it's multiple weeks. How long Joyce is the. CDL maintainer one up for, I know that closes tomorrow, right?
That was extended because that was put in the Lakeville Journal and due to their publication, that one went above and beyond the normal length. Because we haven't had local particip, a lot of local participation. This was advertised for two full weeks. Which Jean, you and I had that discussion and we determined that was the average.
Right, and it's, it did start out, we were gonna run it just that Monday through Friday and then. When I realized that it was gonna be closing in just five days, I asked for it to be. Extended for another week. I think two weeks is the absolute minimum. I think it should actually be longer than that. But, so yeah, this one was two weeks.
And how many candidates did we, did we hear from?
One.
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 And, and where, where did we advertise? Did we, did we do the, the normal routine, social media, website? Cog, I mean, how, how, how did we get this out?
It was on the website, which is our general O two.
Website? So to, to just, just the website?
Did we put it up on Indeed at all?
We did not. We haven't done Indeed in over. Two years, maybe?
When, when we did the park and rec, where, where did we advertise there? Do you remember?
I don't know, that was a subcommittee that did that, we didn't do that. That was through the commission.
So I think we do need to come up with a minimum. Where it's, you know, a minimum of a certain number of weeks and there can always be extenuating circumstances, but.
Think we need to come up with a minimum, a minimum, you know, advertising spaces or spheres. Because there are, you know, other places where we can advertise. I think it should go out on any state association to their listserv or not listserv, their job boards if they have one.
Did we get this out in our newsletter at all?
Um, I'd have to check, I don't know if it, if the timing was right for a newsletter to make it. In the newsletter. When did it go up, Joyce?
I, I, I don't have it with me, whatever, right after, the day after your last meeting, I think.
So it would have been.
But we followed the same process, this is just for an assistant position and when we did social service assistant, this is the same process. Park and rec, I think you're talking about was more of a director position, so I do think that there's a different level of classification.
That's true, that's true. So, so what, so, so when we, when we advertise for assistant positions, so we, we've done. We, we've done the standard due diligence that we normally do.
That is correct.
But we don't always do. Really, the only reliable, the only steady place that it goes is it gets posted on our website. And I do have a running, you know, there are often job opportunities for the town of Kent with a link out to the website. But I, I'd have to go back and, you know, look in each one to see, I know some of them I included. Openings. But for some I didn't. Some of it depends on when the opening and closing date were.
Okay, but for, but for assistant positions, we, we don't advertise as much, we don't do as much social media, is that what I'm hearing now? We don't. We don't go out to the cog.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, certainly not consistent.
I, I'd like to be more consistent. That I would like to, if whatever.
I agree.
Whatever we do for assistant positions and, and, and head.
Do the same across the board.
Same, so that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think what you want to do is you want to get. People who are qualified and you have somebody who responded and is qualified, so, you know, that's.
Oh, without question, I mean, that's, that's.
I think we're just talking about the broader picture.
Yeah, just, just, you know, again, it's just, just, just the process has just seemed very, very quick. To me, I mean, relative to other positions that we have looked at in my short time here, so. That's all I'm saying.
So. Alright, so we have a start date, we have. The hours, we have the starting hourly rate. Is there anything else we need, Joyce, for the motion?
No.
Okay. So, I'll. Sorry, did I see somebody raise their hand?
I made the motion to accept the recommendation that's given to us, so.
Okay. So, um, let's. Try our minds for a vote. All those in favor? I. I.
I.
Thanks. Welcome back, Donna. We'll see you on the twenty eighth.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ty.
So next is seven point three. Um, opioid settlement funds allocation discussion. I just wanted to. Um, really have an initial brief discussion regarding the opioid settlement funds that the town is receiving, so. Um, Attorney General Tong has been working on this for a number of years and really been. Fighting for these drug companies to be accountable along with many, many other states. And there, I believe there. Um, at least two large national sett- settlements with, um, some drug companies. And as a result, um, every town in, in the state. Um, will be receiving funding as long as they opt in, which we did. And so, um, the eligible uses are very specific to opioid, um, remediation, they call it. Um. And that's included in one of those, in one of the documents that was in your email and is also in the folder. And then Barbara, um. Let me just go on screen share for a minute. Barbara. Pulled up a nice, um. Wrap up. Of what will be, um. Seeing, so. This is, this is just for. The first five years, this is expected very similar to the tobacco settlement. That was a. Multi-decade, um, settlement that, that was funding that was coming in for states that participated. So this is, um. Set to be over the course of eighteen years, so this is the, the. Five-year look ahead. What's in the green? Um. As of. Two days ago. While the, the portal that we subscribe to in order to do this. Um, says that they paid those, um, five sums. We have not seen that in our bank account. I did this morning get an email from the. Um, the settlement attorney saying that those five years have been, um. Deposited in our accounts. Barbara's, um. Doing, wearing her Cornwall hat today, so I will check in with her tomorrow. But in theory, we will have a little bit over eight thousand dollars, um. To. Figure out how we wanna use. So not really for tonight. Um, I just wanted to make you all aware of this. And then if you wanna look at those. Um, eligible uses, let me see here. Um, I included that.
I had no chance to look at this.
Yeah, I did not, I was not planning to discuss it tonight. I don't think it needs to be a way in the weeds conversation. Um, again, it's very narrow in scope of, um, what's eligible for use. I think it makes sense to look at some of the organizations, the regional organizations that are doing a lot of this work. To, um. Give some of the money to them. I do think that we could do some community, um. Education that those organizations also provide at very low cost, so, um. I, I think next month we'll have more of a conversation, um. About the different organizations that, that provide help for Kent residents. And then, um, we can go from there.
Uh, there's one area in here that, um. I know a lot of people have had. Tremendous difficulty with. Actually getting, um, medication. Fulfilled. Uh, there's backlogs, pharmacies aren't coming through, um, and we might look into. Ways that we could set up a health line or something for people. Who are, you know, on, on a substitute medication.
In the medic- medication, that MAT program, medication assisted treatment programs.
Because, um. It. You're, you're putting people who are at risk of relapse into really frustrating situations when. Um. They, they have prescriptions. That they can't get filled. In a timely manner by the pharmacies. So that's, that's an issue.
Hmm, yeah, and there has been a lot of, um, visibility on that in the last couple of years and. Some of the various organizations that we work with are addressing those gaps, so. I would think that rather than us trying to take that on as a municipality, um. Sharing and, you know, giving that money to these organizations that already have the infrastructure. Um, might make some more sense, but let's take the time to, you know, consume all the. Content and then we can come back with another discussion. At the next meeting. And there's no, um. There's no, uh, expiration date or deadline of when we have to use the funds by, um, because it's this very, very long-term settlement. So, and it's because it's a settlement versus a grant, um. So it's not, you know, we don't have to move quickly on where to spend this money, so. Just wanted to let you all know that it's there and we should, you know, have some good conversations about it.
Jean, to, to your knowledge, uh, uh, neighboring municipalities, have they been dispersed, uh, uh, these funds? And if so, uh, do you know how they've used them?
Yes, so I asked out to the cog a couple of days ago, the, um, those who I got. Um, little bit of information from, um. Harwinton is giving it to a, um, the Harwinton opioid outreach program. Uh, another town is using it for, um, to purchase Narcan. Um, and also giving it to a local rehab, opioid rehab program. A few of the towns had no plan yet. Um, Litchfield gave it all of their money to the Litchfield Prevention Council. Uh, one of the towns is donating it to EMS to offset their Narcan costs, so it's very sort of wide.
Yeah.
Smattering. Now, the seven towns that responded to my question out to the cog.
Oh, great, thank you. That, that gives me reference. Good.
Sure. So seven point four, um, National Guard cyber assessment, so the registrars. Were contacted by the Connecticut National Guard, who is the point of contact for, um, cybersecurity. Um, in the state. And they are doing free assessments for, um, municipalities that are primarily. Focused on election cybersecurity, but also, um, municipal cybersecurity. So we're going to be participating in a, um, an onsite, in-person, uh, cybersecurity. Assessment in the next few weeks. We'll have, um. All the partners there that are supposed to be there, but the Connecticut National Guard brings in a team. Um, and what we'll come out with is, uh, basically a kickoff for, um, to, to do some planning. On Monday, I participated in a day-long tabletop exercise up at the Armory. Um, in a windowless room in the Armory, um, called Cyber Nutmeg that. The Connecticut National Guard and Demis put on annually. And the morning was full of training on cyber talk topics, um. Ransomware, sort of what's happening in the landscape, um, of, you know, of recent. Um, and then it also, and I've never, I've been to a lot of cybersecurity training and, um, seminars, and I've never seen an actual. Um. Simulated ransomware attacks, so they had a, um. Basically, they have an operating system that's in a sandbox or like a practice area. And they kicked off a ransomware attack on a, um. Uh, fictitious municipality. And what was really amazing was they had a timer that they. Hit go on, and within two minutes. This, um, it's an actual, um. Ransomware, it's actual ransomware code, and they kick off this ransomware attack and within two minutes. Every file, every, everything. Sorry, um. In this computer, which was representative of many, many, many computers in this sort of mid-sized municipality. Everything was encrypted and. At first glance, you were sort of seeing just some really subtle activity in a file explorer, but then when he. Told us what was going on, it was going one folder by one folder and even. Where there weren't folders, where you were looking at a folder of documents, it was just slightly changing the icon of that document or of that folder. Which was encrypting. All of the data, um. On these, on the computer, so, um, there, this entire fictitious municipality was now, you know, basically brought to its. Um, IT knees in two minutes. So then, um, in the afternoon, we took that basic scenario and broke up into three groups. And it was, they did purposeful mixing of big municipalities with small municipalities. Chief elected officials with, um, IT managers, so really mixing up the group so that we had good discussion. We are given a scenario of that same thing happens. What, what do you do on day one? What do you do on day four? What do you do on day seven? And then more guided, um. Questions that, that took us through, what do your plans look like? What do? Um, how would you be responding, including how would you be responding? Because now that, um. That cyber attack is, um, has gotten, uh, media attention, and how would you? Walk through the, um, the public information and, um. The messaging for something like that. So it was, um. It was a great day. It was a bit terrifying, to be perfectly honest. Um, so this. Um, assessment that we're going to have in a couple of weeks is going to kick us off to start. Um. Some planning and putting. Different plans, um, developing different plans to, um. To certain hard, sort of harden our cybersecurity stance, and it will also, um. Put us in the right frame, and there are certain things that we have to do in order to even get a policy. Um, written for cybersecurity insurance, and this should get us in place to be able to, um. Even see how much one is going to cost us, um, come budget season, so. More to come on this, but, um. I think it's gonna be a great thing, you know, for town government to walk through this process and, and certainly. Time. For, oh, you know, overtime for us to, um, go through this process. So moving on to eight, under old business approval of the explanatory text. Which I, um, emailed and I think is in the folder, which I will put on screen share. Um, when I talked to Randy. Um. He was. We were in agreement that, um. In order to comply with the statute and for what the topics are, that it should be, um. Fairly straightforward and fair and simple. Um, so. We know what the, um. The questions are, so really what we're. Focusing on is that paragraph and that paragraph. So the explanatory text for question one. Reads the proposed appropriation is for the town to contract with the Connecticut State Police for a second resident street. Sorry, resident trooper who will function as a school resource officer at Kent Center School during the school year and provide general municipal police services when not engaged as an SRO. A yes vote would allow the town to expend funds for the services and no vote will not allow the expenditure. Expenditure and services. Then the second one. Is similar, proposed appropriation is for the town to continue to reimburse the Kent Volunteer Fire Department for contracted EMS staffing. Based on current reimbursements, expenditures are expected to exceed the amount approved in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. A yes vote would allow for, allow the town to continue to expend funds to reimburse KVFD and no vote. Will not allow the expenditure. Um, in conversation with him, there was, um, questions about, um. The ability for. The Board of Ed or the Fire Department to provide, um. A presentation, and he said, yeah, that would be absolutely allowable. Um, so I'll let them know that. Um. I don't want the, you know, we have to. Have a balance, cause we don't wanna, you know, presentations that go on for hours and hours and death by PowerPoint, um. But we do wanna, you know, be able to. Um. Allow the, the people who are attending the meeting to. Um, get, you know, more detailed information and then allow plenty of time for question and answer. But as far as the explanatory text, um. This is pretty much. Pretty. Simple and straightforward.
I think it's fine because it's very neutral and. Clear.
Very clear.
So, um, would we like to entertain a motion? That might say something like. We, um. Approve the proposed explanatory text and. Um, well. Hmm, what's the word? I'm trying to make a reference to the statute that says that we have to do certain things. Um. Um. Sorry. So if I can find this quick. We can just leave it generic. Um. That we will, you know, we approve the. Uh, explanatory text as submitted and approved by town council. To be. Um. Prepared in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes.
Second.
Sorry, should have written up a. Motion on that one. Thank you. There, Joyce, any pinch points here?
Did you make that motion, Jean, and you seconded it, Rufus? Or did you make the motion, Rufus, and there's no second?
No, I seconded Jean's motion.
Thank you. Just wanted to check with you, Joyce, is there anything that we're? Um. I'm just looking at the statute. But if we are just saying that it. You know, we're going to. Um. Prepare everything in accordance with the statutes, we'll get that. Handled. Anything else, Joyce?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor? I.
I.
Thank you. Um, eight point two, Main Street noise and traffic. Uh, second report. Um. So I, after the last meeting, I pulled up the document and started making. Um. Changes to it and. Sort of got to thinking that. We should, um. We should really send this back to. The committee for them. And just in thinking of, you know, the first, uh, report of. And just in thinking of, you know, the first uh report of the um. Of the Swift House Task Force, we didn't, you know, go in and make changes to their doc- their document. You know, we wouldn't do that on the P O C D. We would um, you know, have, we would have them go back. You know, we would make comment and have them go back so I could, you know, write up an email for the committee. But I think it it's really up to the committee to to check in and and update. You know, the changes, like, you know, the simple things like the error in the contract, um the contract length. You know, some other things. That's sort of the, you know, the rhythm that's followed for the P O C D that's followed for um other reports.
So with other reports, P O C D and otherwise, um do you, we uh, you know, give, give these committees? Um a a list of bullet points of things we would like to see changed or edited or?
Yeah, so like in the P O C D, we um, we were, they have to buy statute um, have it out. For comment. I mean, this is different because it's not something that's a larger plan and and gets put out to public comment or anything. But I think, yeah, so um. I think if we let them know our feedback, they can update the report and get it back to us. Felt like I was overstepping by actually like going and making changes to the document.
Okay, so we're thinking that the committee will meet again, um and um I'll I'll try to get that. Get that going. Uh is there something, are are there a list of things that we should, we should focus on with that report that we should? Think about editing, I mean, other than the the actual uh contract?
Yeah, so I had a couple of concerns. Um let me. Um like statements like there's no additional policing coverage on Main Street beyond one trooper, I think. You know, I'd like to give feedback knowing, you know, because we talk to the state police. We talked to Andrew that um there is additional coverage. And if the committee wants to leave their report as is, then that's their um. Their decision, but I do think that there's feedback that should be given to them um.
That there is, there is additional coverage other than one?
Yeah, things um. Things like the uh, the noise piece um. When I spoke with the lieutenant at Troop L, um the troopers don't. They don't do, you know, like they do speed enforcement on highways and here on Route Seven and other places. They don't do um noise enforcement per se, that that actually would um. It's it's not in their scope of what they, they don't have a noise measuring. Device that they can um measure noise and then pull someone over and issue them a ticket. So um.
So no, no decimal meters? Okay.
No. I checked again with the lieutenant on that today and he said they're not, they don't carry them, they don't have them. So just things like that, but I'd rather provide it in. You know, feedback in an email than change their document. Like I said, I felt like I was overstepping.
And the existing contract is a two-year contract, not a three, that was.
Always been.
Actually, yeah. Okay. Okay, I will uh contact the committee members and see when they'd like to meet.
Okay, and I'll try to get that out um. In the next couple of days. My focus is gonna be on getting this RFP.
Yes.
Done, so it.
Well, this, this is.
May not see it until the holiday, frankly. Alright, appreciate that. The um, the salary review, management review um. And I actually misread this. I think I thought this was, I don't know why I in my head read this as the. Employment manual um. So. How do we want to proceed with this? Because we can, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of. The COG survey is no good, the CCM survey is no good, every position, every town is a little bit different. So. You know, how, how is the best way, what's the best way to proceed? Forward with this without, and what is our goal? Is our goal to um? Go into budget season and redo all of the. Um compensation is this to review? Other um. Other towns, I I just wanna sort of have a brief conversation about what we would like to. What we're, what really is the goal? And um we did. Receive an um engagement letter from the, there's a um law firm that. Karma works with and provides us one hour of consulting a month. And they're, you know, obviously subject matter experts in labor and employment practices and. Maybe we would ask them to come to the next meeting and and talk about. What would be, you know, where we would wanna go with with salary review, cause again, we did do that. Or a a previous board did do that. Salary review and in two thousand eighteen.
Do you have any idea what other municipalities do in this regard? Like, I mean, i- is there um? You know, do other towns look at other towns' salaries on a periodic basis every year, every two years?
Um I I don't know any specifics. My, you know, I would assume that um. The towns are looking at the COG surveys and the, you know, CCM surveys. I don't think COS puts anything out, but I can always ask. But I I don't know what their practices are.
Maybe if we just kind of ask other, other selectmen of other towns, like how, how do you go about this? Because it's a lot of data, it's a lot of information and um, you know, uh, h- how do other towns do this? I mean, I'm new to this relatively still um, but um, I mean, we could, we could start going down the COG survey. Um I I I have done tons of researches looking at other uh budgets of other, other of other towns. Um I I I have salaries uh of various um uh titled officers, but um, but I don't know. I I don't know what the best way to do this is really.
Maybe the question that I should ask out to the COG is how do? How do you use these various surveys, the COG survey, the CCM survey? Um in, you know, when you're, when you're in budget season, do you? And do you have any um? Do you have regular, like, complete review of a positions? Compensation, do you? I don't know if that would help us get to better, you know, some sort of best practice or?
What, what is the best practice? Again, it's so much data to digest and, you know, r- right now, we're at the, what, two and a half hour mark here almost. In this meeting and uh it's hard, you know, I mean, just to, just to keep focused on all this stuff. Um I we would need, I think, a special meeting. I thought about maybe doing this piecemeal, like doing, doing one position after the other, but.
Yeah, I think it's.
I don't know. I I I would rather do it all at once personally.
Yeah. So let me put a couple of questions out to the COG.
What do you think Rufus?
Well, I think. You know, in terms of our goal, we wanna make sure that. Our employees are. Where they should be, you know, that we're not shortchanging them or anything else. So it's a question of of coming up with. The analytics of the competition, really, how do we, you know, um so. We ha- we are gonna have to look at some data, but it's, it's really, I'm. More concerned that that uh we're staying currently fair with other towns. I don't wanna all of a sudden find Kent. You know, is, uh hasn't, hasn't. Stayed current with how. How we're approaching things um. And I think we wanna look at also the idea of of um ranges. A little bit more carefully. Not just giving specific numbers, but you know, looking at at a range. That it would depend on experience and um. Other, other. Criteria. You know, so if, if if we have somebody in a position and they retire um. And, you know, do we, would we be bringing in somebody who might be brand new to that position at the same salary? I don't think necessarily. That, you know, I think experience earn, you 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 earn through experience. So, you know, there is a lot and I agree that, you know. After two hours plus of other things, this is not the time.
I mean, how do we feel about a special meeting? I mean, we've um, I, I mean, salary review's been on here for meeting after meeting after meeting. Um I mean, this doesn't have to happen, y- you know, next week or the following, but I would like to have, I think, a special meeting just to talk about this. Uh before the budget season. I I really think uh people, people deserve our attention with this matter.
I agree.
So because, so it usually takes a few days to get information back from the COG. And with, you know, heading into the holiday, a lot of people, you know, may not reach back out. So we could do um. We could do a special meeting the second week in December, but I almost think that if we could do. Um a special meeting, single topic for an hour before the next. Second Board of Selectmen meeting, which is, I can't even read my handwriting. Fifteenth, fifteenth, I can't read it.
You're not meeting on the fifteenth because of the referendum.
The referendum.
Oh, right. Um, let me just get to a calendar here. There we go. So do we do a a special meeting another day that week?
It might not be teaching. I'm trying to figure out when that is. Hold on.
So the twelfth through the sixteenth, basically. Which gives a full clear week before even the. The holiday.
I could probably do something the fourteenth.
Ouch.
Okay.
Well, it depends what time it is. That's the only time I have any sort of anything.
Okay.
That week. I'm totally clear, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. I've like a a five thirty. Commitment, which I really can't get out of.
Yeah, that's okay. Let's um.
We wanna try to avoid the night. Can we do the, is there a possible time we can do the day that week?
Earlier on the fourteenth, so uh, you know, three PM or something like that or?
Yeah, I could do three um, could do. Earlier, whatever, you know, that helps. There's nothing until six thirty. Conservation is that night at six thirty though, but.
How, how early could you go Rufus?
I mean, I I can go early, early that day. The only thing I have that day is like a five thirty. Appointment and it's in Kent, so it's. You know, I just, we have to be done by five fifteen.
Okay.
Do we wanna do like a one o'clock?
Let's do one o'clock, twelve thirty, something like that. I mean, how long do we think this might be?
I think we should try to keep to um. An hour ninety minutes, not.
Okay.
I think we should do it in person at the town hall.
A good.
Talking crazy Rufus.
That might be difficult on the fourteenth because if the registrar voter set the room up for the fifteenth, the big meeting room may not be available.
Right. What about the thirteenth?
Uh Glenn might still be teaching.
Might be teaching if.
Oh, okay.
So, well, I I mean, if we have to do Zoom, we have to do Zoom, but you know, be nice to.
Maybe if you did it in the morning, I mean, because referendum doesn't start till noon, right?
Right, so. Why don't we try for ten thirty and then we can check with the ROVs to make sure that, and then we'll be done by noon? We can say we'll agree to ninety minutes, no more.
Yes, I could do that.
Okay.
And that's at nine thirty or ten thirty?
Ten thirty to noon on Wednesday, the fourteenth.
One issue only, salary review, let's go.
Okay.
Okay.
Onto streetscape update on the primi- primary repair work that they were um. Needing to do this week and next is um pretty much wrapping up this week. That Elizabeth Street stuff, the church um entrances, all that is wrapping up this week. They're doing more paving, um wrapping up that, I believe tomorrow. There are gonna be a couple of minor outstanding areas that because of the weather changing. Um and they're starting to demob their equipment. Um may have to be completed in the spring, but we're starting that punch list. So we'll make sure that anything that has to wait until spring um. Makes, you know, gets on the punch list. There is some um, there is some granite curbing that has not been used yet. That um we need to get more information from them. We need to get linear feet and cost. But we may be, I may be coming back to ask the board whether or not they want us that, whether or not we want to um. Purchase that and store it for phase two. Phase two um. They should have um. Majority said that they're likely gonna have a very preliminary, early, early um information. Sometime um in the next two to four weeks. And there's sort of benchmarks that they need to meet for the the grant, so I forget what the percentage is. Some small percent that they need to be able to send to DOT for review, so that stuff will start moving forward. And then keep.
Haven't we already purchased the curbing that was delivered here?
So we only pay for what we use. And so there was, there will be, you know, you never order exactly seven pencils when you might. Need eight pencils, I guess. So there um, there is some that's still. That I think Rick and the foreman went out and identified, you know, what we wouldn't even accept. In as potential, you know, that would be um rejected. Anyway, you know, if it's got marring on the top, you know, whatever, um and then they need to get back to us with um, with a price. So there is, you know, there is some. But we'll hopefully at the next meeting, by the next meeting, we'll have, um. That number. We just have to figure out if we wanna purchase it and store it or if we wanna not. But some more to come on that. Um, I don't see. Um. So Zan, you're the, I, you're the only subcommittee chair I see here. So did you have? Anything, um? Anything else under subcommittee reports?
Um, the only thing I wanted to suggest is, um. That, uh, I know there was a discussion at one of the prior meetings about the cost of fuel. To heat the Swift House over the winter. And I mentioned this to you this afternoon, Jane, but I think it might be worthwhile to investigate. Whether it would be cheaper to hire a plumber to drain the pipes. And since the building has closed anyway, and just not heat it through the winter instead of. Spending a lot of money to heat an empty building.
Yeah, and I said I would follow up with Joyce because we have to ask, we have to. Check with Karma and. Um. Yeah, we have to do a little bit more investigating. Joyce, you have any, anything you wanna jump in on that?
Well, I mean, if the chamber is still using it for storage and I don't know what they're storing, we'd need to confirm.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll. We'll have to follow up on that.
Okay. Maybe my just way to try to save money and put it into other things.
Hmm.
Possibly. That's all. Thank you for moving forward with the R F P. I do appreciate that.
Thanks for the help. Appreciate it. Um. Moving on to selectmen's reports. We covered a lot tonight, so I don't have anything further and we're um, deep into. This meeting. That just hit two hours and thirty minutes.
Um, Jean, there was a question in the chat about. The streetscape, um. Status of getting the company to pay for materials, they forgot.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anywhere with um, S L R on that.
Okay.
I've got one question um, about, um. Uh, let's see, the Maureen Brady, the um, the motion from a couple of years ago about uh. About that, uh, is, should we discuss that further or is that, um? That, that, you know.
So I haven't talked to Kathleen yet, so if. Uh, we'll make sure that it gets on the next agenda, but I did wanna talk to Kathleen. I have a post-it. On my computer. Um, and I left her a voicemail, um. So if you can give me. That time to. Have a conversation with Kathleen, um. Hopefully we can move this forward.
Okay, that's good.
Super. Any, um, we'll go for round two of public comment. Don't see any hands up. Scanning a couple of times, don't see any hands up. So according to Apple, it is nine oh four and. In case we get cut off, I'm gonna wish everybody a happy, quiet, relaxing, unremarkable, but enjoyable Thanksgiving. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at uh, nine oh four.
So moved.
Awesome, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Alright.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
It's a long one, but a good one. Appreciate it.